Good evening. This is Monday, October 31st, just about 7:00. This is an evening of committee meetings for Athens City Council. If you pick up the agenda, it looks as though it's a relatively small agenda. However, there's some really meaty issues on there and I need to remind people that this committee meetings are work sessions for council and administrators and members of the public who are presenting to them. So it'll really be a discussion between council members, in this instance, Law Director Hunter and others. So there will most likely not be an opportunity for citizen input this evening. However, at later points in the discussion of each of these items, obviously, there'll be plenty of time for citizens' comments. Our first item on the agenda is discussion about a proposed ordinance regarding the retirement center planned unit development on Stimson Avenue. Council members, I believe, are all in possession of proposal from the Law Director and Mr. Hunter is here to talk to us for a while about that proposal.
Thank you, Jim. First of all, I want to just indicate and go over the process that I went through. I was asked by Jim to review 20 conditions that council was considering placing on the, for their adoption of the planned unit developed by National Church residences on Stimson Avenue, a planned unit development. In looking at those conditions, I did several things and I want to indicate to council what I did. First of all, I consulted with Steve Pearson, the Director of Code Enforcement with the city, to get the city administration's input on what the status of the development was and to talk with in depth an individual that is more familiar with the actual mechanics of the workings of the administration's process in approving a planned unit development. You need to be aware that I'm not involved as Law Director in the direct approval process for planned unit development and have not been directly involved in this process up until the present time. What I did was to review your draft ordinance and the 20 conditions to possibly suggest to you what I felt was acceptable for council to consider. And in looking in that light, where you're adding new conditions, I look to see whether those conditions are outside the parameters of what the Planning Commission has considered but within their intent or something that the Planning Commission considered and decided not to take advantage of. If it's completely outside the parameters of what should be considered, I'm recommending that you delete that condition from the ordinance as one that would probably not be appropriate, in my opinion, to place in the ordinance. The recommendations that I make to you tonight obviously involve value judgments from my office. They're my best opinion based on whether or not some of these things should be in and whether or not they're consistent enough with the Planning Commission's intent to be adopted simply by a majority vote of council. If they're not consistent enough with what the Planning Commission was intending or doing, then it's going to take a three-fourths vote of council to amend those, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, which is in accordance with the Athens Code. I've gone through each one of the conditions and recited those for you, given you my opinion as to whether or not they should be in the ordinance, whether or not they should be adopted by a simple majority, or whether they should be adopted by a three-fourths vote. I've also, in consultation with Steve Pearson, added significantly to the number of whereas's to the ordinance, simply because you're getting into a lot of additional conditions than what the Planning Commission originally placed on the project. And to support those, I think you need to be very clear in your legislation as to what the background is for those. You do that in the whereas's. So Steve and I have considerably added to the whereas's, probably another seven or eight whereas's that you can read to the ordinance. The conditions, I'm just going to get down through them one at a time and read them. We've also suggested to you specific language for the ordinance. In some cases, the language that was given to me in the conditions was probably permissible, but it was very vague and not specific. And Steve and I have added some specificity to that and made them much more clear in what we think the meaning of council was in those. If you adopt the, I'm going to suggest to council and to Jim that you take the recommendation for the ordinance. I've given you a draft of a specific ordinance, introduce it that way. If there's some intent on council to modify it, you could modify it. If it is adopted by a three-fourths majority of council, then all of the conditions that I have placed in the ordinance would go into effect. If it's adopted by less than three-fourths of a majority of council, those conditions that require a three-fourths passage would end up being deleted from the ordinance and only those, the conditions that only require a majority vote of council would remain in the ordinance.
Excuse me, Gary.
Sure.
Would you prefer council members' questions or comments on each one as you go through or hold them till the end?
No, I would probably prefer, as we go through each one of the conditions, if you have some questions, we can address them at that. That's probably the easiest way to do it, I think. The first one, proposed condition, the way I laid out the memo to you is I recited the condition that you gave to me. And the first condition that was given to me was the railroad berm is to remain or be replaced if it is altered during construction. I considered that a satisfactory condition that could be placed and passed by a majority vote of council because I really considered that something that was probably within the original intent of the Planning Commission. I did give you some specific language and I changed the language to read, "Maintain the existing railroad berm at its current elevation and repair any disturbances caused by site development." If Steve and I have misunderstood, you know, clearly your intent or something, you may want to indicate that, but I think that was probably a little bit clearer way to state what you were trying to state in that particular condition.
And the only reason why we put it in is because there was no evidence on the plan that that was the intent. I mean, you know, so when we don't have plans, how do we know?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that one, you know, is fine. All I did was try to make it a little bit more, you know, clear what we were doing there. The second condition, "The vegetative buffer adjacent to the neighborhoods will be maintained or replaced if disturbed." Again, I consider that one satisfactory and passage by a majority vote of council will cause the inclusion of this condition, again, because it's within, in my opinion, the intent of the Planning Commission. Again, I changed it slightly to say, "In the ordinance, maintain all existing trees and vegetative buffers adjacent to the property perimeter and replace any damaged buffer plantings caused by site development." Again, just trying to be a little bit more consistent in the manner in which we're presenting the conditions and clear in what the intent of council was. You should be aware that my concept in reviewing these was to, as much as possible, give the credence to what council's desires were in considering these conditions. So if anything, I tried to err on the side of including them rather than excluding them. But there are a few that I felt were not appropriate. This one was okay, though. The third one, was there any questions or comments? The third one is, "National Church residences will provide a final site development plat prior to beginning the building process. This plat will be filed along with a certified copy of this ordinance with the Athens County Recorder. The railroad berm is to remain or be replaced if it is altered during construction." Again, I found this satisfactory and something, it probably was generally in the intent of the Planning Commission. I see nothing wrong with having the site plan filed with the Recorder's Office. I'm not sure there is an actual condition that it be, is there?
No, there isn't. It has historically been done that way.
We don't, Steve and I didn't see anything wrong with it, although it's not currently required in our county that you do that.
So we're not approving a plat? You don't have to approve the plat for PUD?
Right.
You don't need any plans for PUDs?
Under your current regulations.
Good, thank you.
I actually think those are different things. The current regulations do require the submission of a plan, not a plat.
Right, right.
And we don't have a plan with all the required documents, which is different from a plat, I guess.
In this case, you're requiring a plat be done and filed. And I'm saying it's okay to do that. And that particular one, I'm saying is probably enough within the intent of the Planning Commission, mainly because it's historically what's been done in these cases, to do it by a majority vote. It's something, some of these things fall within the purview of what the administration could do automatically on your behalf, but I see no harm in council, in some cases, putting them in the ordinance also to make sure they get them.
So Gary, how does that relate to the requirements of the various shells in the code where it says, "The developer shall provide this, the developer shall provide that," that we don't have? How does that relate to this? This is currently in the code?
The requirement of the plat?
The requirements for the plans that are included in this particular offering.
Well, you never record the complete plans. Those are always ended up being filed with the administration.
No, no, I meant, but I just wondered how it all relates to that other, since we're talking about plans now and not plats, the plan would be filed.
Well, this was talking about...
A plat.
Yeah, a plat is what the condition is referring to. I wasn't asked to address specifically whether the plan, the plans are normally, to the best of my knowledge, will be submitted to, through your office.
Right, and presented at the Planning Commission.
I was thinking of campus edge and the drainage questions and so on and so forth. I mean, we've all been down this path several times and that's why this one does stand in some contrast.
Normally, those things would have long been considered before they got to council.
Right.
I mean, that's the only, that would be my experience.
Are you concerned about establishing a precedent that a proposal can get to us without the consideration of the plans and the required application?
I'm not establishing any precedent. I was asked to review 20 conditions, which is what I reviewed. This particular condition deals with the plat. The deficiencies or shortcomings of the subdivision regulations, it's pretty much common knowledge that, you know, I wasn't in agreement necessarily with all the things that were done and the changes to the subdivision regulations, but that's what you have in place right now. And that's where this PUD is found, is in the subdivision. Those are things you may have to address in the future if you think there are shortcomings, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you in that, but I can only deal with the law that's on the books at the present time and the procedure we're following. Right now, we're only talking in this particular one, though, about the plat, and I have approved that for, as a condition. Condition number four, "National Church residences will provide a connector to the bike path from Morris Avenue." Again, generally, I found that to be satisfactory. I did think it needed to be specific as to who builds and maintains it, and I felt that a passage by a majority vote of council will cause the inclusion of that one. I thought, again, it was very, probably within sort of the intent of the Planning Commission. The language we're proposing to you, Steve, in my office, is, "Construct a bike path connector to be maintained by the owner or lessee holder from Morris Avenue to the existing bike path with the design and location reviewed and approved by the Athens City Service Safety Director." So we're proposing language to you that would say the owner or leaseholder would build and maintain it, the connector, because I'm assuming that this connector is wholly within their property to it. Stop me if you have a question. Number five, the condition you proposed to me, "The city sewer line traversing the site shall not be moved or disturbed in any way." To me, this was a really obvious condition. Usually, we have easements for our sewer and water lines either in the modern era by actual written documents for them and prior to the modern era, i.e., prior to the turn of the century, well, turn of the last century, I guess, at this point, turn of the 1900s, they were done by custom and prakme. People just granted them, they weren't recorded in many cases, but after they'd been used and for a number of years and so forth, become part of it. If they're located in our streets, we automatically have easements for them within our own streets. And even if we vacate streets, they still remain those easements. This particular case, I asked Steve if he could check on the location of water and sewer easements. I'm going to ask him to indicate what he found out in that particular case.
Right. The main utility that I looked into was the relief sewer because I knew that there had been some concern about people in that part of town, that this project might impact the existing sewer lines that were there. And I found a copy in the mayor's office of all the easements that were recorded with the plan approval for the relief sewer. That process started, actually, in 1991, obtaining some of those easements, and there's a complete set of documents pertaining to that and the recorded easement in the mayor's office. The storm line, to best of my knowledge, the storm line that runs down through the project is actually part of the flood control project constructed by the Corps of Engineers. That storm sewer that goes down through there is, actually, belongs to them, and if there is an easement recorded for that, I wasn't able to find it. That doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that it doesn't exist, but that is a separate easement between, on that particular property, the Ohio University and the Conservancy District. So that's not the city stormwater line that runs down through there. And as Gary said, too, naturally, any utility that may be contained in the Morris Avenue right-of-way is just part, it's part of that street line. Yeah, yeah. So there may or may not be anything recorded on that. There wasn't anything that I could find.
Are there any utilities going down Morris?
To my knowledge, there are not.
And the depth of the relief sewer, do you know, I don't know what that is?
No, no, I don't.
How wide is the easement?
The easement is 20 feet wide.
That's what we were talking about before, but some of the sewer workers were concerned about the nature of the soil. And actually, I think this is in here, just to be quite frank about it, because we thought that maybe they didn't know enough about the soil and that they'd get into it and figure out that it, well, they did find out what the soil was, that it wasn't really very good. It was more of a buyer beware kind of thing.
Right, and I suspected that, and, you know, I state in the memo, it's kind of one of those obvious things that's there, but sometimes it's good to state the obvious.
We just want any curves or angles in it. I've seen angles before.
Yeah, we all have been around cities, we know some wild waters things sometimes have been done. They're required, you know, under, was it Oops or somebody, to locate all these kind of things before you start constructing.
Yeah, even though we may have an easement that's only 20 feet wide, we may have a utility that's at a depth where that lane back of the bank, without a trench box, require that overdig on each side. But as we go down in depth, we're also required, or a contractor is required, to box that utility off so you don't have a bank collapse. Some of the discussion, I think, from the Utilities Department was that if we didn't use a trench box to work on a very deep utility, you'd have to lay the bank back at a certain distance. So I think their comment was based on not using safety measures that normally are required, the trench box for deep excavation.
And Nancy, you're absolutely right about this, it was kind of a notice kind of thing. That's the way I actually viewed it initially and was toying with just putting it in kind of a notice section in the ordinance.
That's what it is.
I left it in the conditions, again, thinking it was probably an important enough notice that it's okay to be in the condition. I did rewrite it slightly. Steve and I actually rewrote it and it now reads, "There shall be no disturbance of any public utilities, including but not limited to water lines, sewer lines, or storm lines, nor encroachment into any easements or records or by use for said utilities unless specifically authorized by the Athens City Service Safety Director." Again, a statement of the obvious, but it does put them on notice of what the requirements are for that. Proposed condition number six, "The Stimson Avenue right-of-way shall be determined and not encroached upon."
Is that Stimson or Morris? I'm looking at number six in your...
No, it's Stimson.
It's Stimson was the way that was written to me.
But then on the other...
On the draft, it says Morris.
But it is Stimson.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the draft, it says Morris?
Yeah.
Then it should say Stimson, yeah. Stimson Avenue was the way it was phrased to me. It doesn't make a difference whether it's Stimson or Morris, but I mean, you don't want it's the same answer to you. Again, it's fairly obvious, but it's that you need to make sure you determine where the right-of-way is before you begin actual, you know, construction. So I found that to be satisfactory and, again, part of the normal kind of review process within the intent of the Planning Commission. And simply recommend, yeah, it's kind of another one of those notice kind of things, but I'd, probably a little bit stronger than a notice because they actually have to affirmatively do something specifically on this one. I put, "Determine the location of the Stimson Avenue right-of-way and not encroach thereon without the express consent of the city council by ordinance," because, as you know, I've previously ruled only council can allow encroachments upon city right-of-way. And that has been my rule for 15 years or so. Council routinely considers matters of encroachments upon, so the administration is well aware that only council can allow encroachments upon city right-of-way.
Probably while going through that, too, my thoughts were, there was a lot of discussion about building encroachment on the Morris right-of-way for the building and some of the parking to be located there. What I had thought was council's intent was to not allow any encroachment, particularly on that Morris Avenue right-of-way, without, as Gary mentioned, permission of council.
Okay, and there was one other thing, and it had to do with the street tour, and when Andy took us there and he was talking about the right-of-way on Stimson and how it is configured, west of the railroad tracks, and in fact, since the area east of the railroad tracks, or where they used to be, is new, there's a different right-of-way there because it's 40 feet as opposed to almost nothing. And I just wanted to make sure everyone was on notice of that because the plans from ODOT say that clearly with the Stimson Avenue Bridge. They gave us 40 feet on both sides. And that's a notice thing, again.
Yeah, Stimson Avenue, there was, a lot of that right-of-way has changed over the years because of the widening we did of Stimson Avenue.
And just that last little piece?
That far down, that far, but yeah.
Okay.
So that should say Stimson Avenue, anyway.
It does, well, for me, it should.
Proposed condition number seven, "A sidewalk along the Stimson Avenue right-of-way shall be built along the site." Again, I found that something that council could do, but I also found it was something that probably the Planning Commission could consider, but it apparently chose not to consider. And so I had a hard time saying it was within their intent, so that one, I really think you're probably going to have to adopt it. I think it's perfectly okay to do it, but I think it's going to take a three-fourths vote to do that one. I do think it has to be, it needs to be more specific as to a beginning point and ending point, et cetera. And all we did there in it is, you know, kind of add the specificity to it. "Construct a sidewalk along the entire property line adjacent to Stimson Avenue right-of-way that conforms to established standards and specifications of the City of Athens," because we do have specific standards for the construction, and I made it the whole length of the project on Stimson Avenue. There is a sidewalk, I think, down through there, but probably not immediately adjacent to the site, right?
Right, there's some sidewalk across the street, essentially the bike path connector that runs down by the Mill Street apartment, so we're looking at a whole new sidewalk, essentially from the bridge back to the parking lot that's just to the west of the property, just back to town toward the entrance.
I see, that's what you're saying.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I was just looking. Number eight was one that, well, I'll read it first and I'll comment. "Additional flood modeling shall be done with the 1980 elevations considered in development. Will proceed with a net zero effect on flood levels at the site and surrounding neighborhoods." This particular one, my first question to Steve, is this something that's required in our floodplain ordinance? And he said, "No." My next question was, "Has this been required in other developments in this particular area?" And he said, "No." Both of those answers kind of raised issues in my mind about the advisability of doing it. I didn't tell you that you absolutely can't do this one. Some of them I told you not to do. This one, my recommendation is that you delete it. If you adopt it, it certainly is beyond the purview of what the Planning Commission's intent and what they were doing. It means, it's additional to what's required in our code, so it would definitely take a three-fourths. To me, it's more problems to try to put something like this in than not, so my recommendation is to delete it. If you want to put it in, if that's the decision of the committee, then Steve and I can give you some language around about it. I'm not sure we knew exactly what you're meaning, truthfully, on the floodplain, but it has, my biggest concern is that it's not been required of other developments, particularly the library was the one I asked about, was it required of the library? He said, "No." And that's just like right around the corner. We didn't require it of Oblynas when they were doing the air additions, we didn't require it of, you know, Walmart and all those places down through there, so.
Just to put it in context, I don't really know what it means either, but I'll tell you.
Well, I don't know, you guys gave it to me, so.
Well, I know, but I think that what we wanted to do is make sure that even though there might be a new, brighter, better approach to it, that some, at least in some people's opinions, that we were still interested in having the 1980 law enforced, the elevations in that law.
Well, yeah, I queried Steve about that, I'm going to ask him to...
Sort of? Yeah, I mean, I think that's basically...
Because there was some down there.
Could I maybe suggest something? I mean, the spirit of this is included in number 11, and we refer to the floodplain. Why don't we say the floodplain as measured by the 1980, I mean, because that's what we were talking about?
Yeah, that's what we're after.
Is the 1980 establishment of the boundaries of the floodplain. And it would seem like we accomplished the same thing in 11 that we tried to get into this net zero business in eight. That was the intent of 11.
Okay. Well, 11 is one of those.
And 11 is okay by a majority, so if we...
Yeah, 11 I found okay. Eight, so I, you know, if that's was included within 11, you'd probably be better off to just take my recommendation and delete it, because it's a little...
But we want to reference the eight...
But we want to reference the 80 map.
Yeah, that's what we wanted to do.
In 11.
You want to reference the 80 map in 11?
Yep.
That's okay too.
Yeah, the only thing we actually, and also just to kind of make a point about this, the only thing we really had any say on would have been Walmart, and that was before the new levels, so. I mean, it makes sense to us, even if not to you. The rest of the time was just primitive.
So there's no distinguishment between retail libraries and residential in terms of flood areas? Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, this is a residential unit we're putting in versus Walmart and.
Some of the specific requirements, there are different ones for use. For example, a non-residential structure can have a basement underneath it as long as it's floodproof. A residential structure cannot have a basement even if it is floodproof. However, the protection level of the city is required is one foot above the base flood elevation of all structures. And in a residential case, you just have to meet the freeboard requirement. In the city of Athens, it's a higher standard, one foot above the base flood elevation, no basement allowed in a residential structure. Finished first floor of a commercial building has to be that high also, but it can have below-grade enclosures if they're floodproof. So for example, in the case of the Citizens Bank being constructed on Stimson Avenue right now, it has a basement underneath it. That's permitted in a commercial building, not in a residential building.
Okay.
But in either case, residential, non-residential, that finished first floor where water would eventually impact someone, that floor has to be one foot above the base flood elevation. The numbers in the core study for that base flood elevation are a little bit lower than the published regulatory numbers in our 1980 flood insurance study. So actually, what's the building, if based on the 1980 flood insurance study, if that's the baseline, that finished first floor will actually be higher than if you'd use the core model because it has a lower base flood elevation.
That's what we said, right? That's what we said, 1980, that's our law. And actually, the developer said two feet as opposed to one with that extra. And so we didn't put that in, but he promised, and Leonard Sawyer's map reflects that, whatever, you know, that's a long time ago. Long time ago.
There are higher standards can be adopted. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources Floodplain Management Division has a series of higher standards that communities can adopt. They do recommend in some cases that what are defined as critical facilities should have a higher standard, and, you know, that's a whole different issue though, that's review the floodplain regulations.
And that's the issue that Carol brought up about the nursing facility, that the actual nursing beds would be considered a critical facility.
Right. You can adopt higher standards, you can adopt a critical facility definition and include that into Title 25 at a later date if you'd like.
But that would be recommending just the higher elevation, not excluding.
Another higher standard is to protect even the ingress egress facilities. There are some communities where not only can you, you have to elevate critical facilities higher, you have to also elevate the access points. But again, locally, our ordinance does not include that at this time.
And that's what I was looking at when I had made those suggestions.
Okay, proposed condition number nine, "The Red Cross shall have access to their property suitable for safe vehicular traffic." This one gave me a fair amount of heartburn also.
It did us too.
Not because of the worthwhileness of doing it, but mainly besides, because it gets us into what I normally think is not something the city should be doing, and that is settling matters between two private property owners, i.e. the Red Cross and the owner of the property. It's not really for the benefit of us or the public. What swayed me to even allow this one to remain in was the fact that I was led to believe the developer doesn't have a lot of problems with it and the fact that it already exists down there. The Red Cross are apparently using, you know, in this manner. Having said that, I kind of reluctantly approved it, but I think it was clearly something the planning commission didn't really consider, or was it even within something they could consider, so I, as I said, have to put it in by three-fourths vote.
Just for background information, if you take a look at Leonard Sawyer's map, which is the only one we had to go on, they were backed right up against it. And then if we're allowing them to build with great freedom on this without setbacks, then what other position could we take, since we're going to say no setbacks required or whatever? I mean, we don't really know where they're going to build what, but that's the tenor of what we're doing here.
Yeah, but the purpose, Nancy, as you all know, that for setbacks is not to provide an access to adjoining properties, it's to provide a buffer between the two properties.
Right. Well, they could traverse that.
So that's why it continues to give me some heart. If you were doing it to provide a buffer, I'd be right there on the same page, but you're doing it to provide an access, which is not.
No, if they only had a plan, we'd know.
That's not the normal reason for.
If they only had a plan.
One of the things that we considered in looking at some of this was some information that I read about community benefit agreements where community organizations could actually negotiate with the developer and would create something that would be like a development agreement that the municipality would record. And I think that that was the spirit of this, and, you know, clearly the Red Cross does serve a large public benefit, it's.
The spirit of it I have no problem with. That's probably why I ultimately said okay to it.
Yeah.
You know, because it is one of those things, but if it's going to be something that, you know, we do do development agreements and so forth, but those things are always earned out in advance, not at the, you know, the approval process before council, so.
I was just going to say, I think the law director and Steve did go to lengths to understand the spirit of what we were suggesting and why we were taking the time to add up a list of 20 conditions, which is pretty unprecedented. And now we have a whole bunch of wherases on top of that, so.
There is essential meaning to this.
He is allowing it some latitude, I think, but for good reason.
Proposed condition number 10, "Evacuation plan shall be developed with consideration for the area's resources in mind." This is kind of, in my opinion, within the purview of the fire chief, something that he does and really isn't something normally considered by the planning commission, as far as I know. So I, but I did allow it as a three-fourths vote. This one, we changed the language slightly to say that, "Develop an emergency evacuation plan and submit it for review and approval by the Athens City Fire Chief after consultation with the Athens County Emergency Management Agency," because that at least is Steve and my understanding of how the process would work on it.
I think part of the concern was really specifically about other facilities that may have plans in mind for resources that exist, like city buses are probably committed already, and, you know, we really wanted to be sure that there was some coordination of the planning because there are a lot of facilities in the flood hazard area in.
You know, I can't agree with you more, Debbie, and, you know, you only have to think back of the terrible tragedy down in New Orleans to really bring this one to the forefront. So, yeah, we were on the same page with you on that one, but as again, I just put some specificity to it, be the fire chief and.
Well, I think the last part of it accomplishes what we want. We have a critical incident, we have a plan that is, it's a county plan, and we've participated in the creation of the plan, so. I think we may not hit it on target, but it's as close as we're going to get in the environment we have right now, so.
It's something that we do, the fire chief has, actually the city, based on the fire chief's recommendations, has an emergency response manual, and we have a plan to respond to any kind of disaster in every facility in town. And the fire chief is the one working with the local EMS office that understands what resources we do have available, who we can call in from the outside, what equipment do we have. So this is something that I think the planning commission didn't look at it because it's something administratively we do for everybody in town.
Condition number 11, "All fill necessary for the development shall be taken from the site or floodplain." I didn't have big problems with it. This is probably the one, Dale, I know this is one that you were interested in, but I had the most trouble exactly understanding why we were requiring that, but that's really not my, you know, not my place to question why you're requiring it.
Right.
Is, can you require it? And I think you can, and I, again, I think this is something the planning commission probably is within their intent and consideration, so I simply said a majority. This is the one, Dale, you're going to have to give me a little more conversation because this is the one where you said you wanted to add something about the 1980 floodplain, I believe, and that may clarify for me exactly what you were intending.
Okay. Well, let me just explain the intent of it in general. The idea was that if you're going to follow a sort of a zero displacement model for development and the floodplain is the area we're considering, that you would want to take the fill from the floodplain. That's it. Not necessarily from the site, although the site is certainly within the floodplain, but there might be another site within the floodplain that would have adequate fill. And so that, you know, if you're filling, if you're pulling out and filling in the same area, then you're not displacing any more water. The 1980 thing comes in our discussion of how are we going to measure, quote, the elevations? Are we going to use, what standard are we going to use? And the sense was, as Steve has pointed out, that the 1980 standard was the one that we wanted to use. My thinking tonight was that, and now it's been reinforced since we're not, we've taken out that previous one, it would be good to reference 1980 since we do talk about the floodplain. As this is written, it doesn't quite get at what I had intended, but maybe it's because I hadn't explained it very well, but maybe now with this explanation, the language could maybe more closely get to what I mean.
I think, Stephen and I would probably have to work on the specific, based on what you said tonight on that one, I really don't have too much trouble. My only other question was, is this appropriate fill?
Well, plus the developers agreed to it.
I think I asked you that question.
At least in principle.
And exceeded it.
The developer has said, "Sure, we don't have a problem with this," in the conversations we've had in here, so I didn't think it was.
Because the other question I had was, is this appropriate fill for, you know, the site, using floodplain soil? And I guess Steve said it was.
Well, I think some of the discussion that you'd had is, could the material come from the other side of the river where the Conservancy District is maintaining the channel? And my thought was, that material may not be suitable to build on.
Right.
Because, for example, Walmart found that it was not.
Sure.
In one of their proposals. And then my thought then was, if it comes from the floodplain, that's a very large area from the east end of town to the north end of town. So I didn't know if you meant from anywhere in the floodplain?
Yeah, yeah, theoretically, anywhere in the floodplain. Because, you know, the flood isn't going to localize on Morris Avenue, so it could come from the Union Street site.
Right. Well, then they'll just have to find someone who is willing to provide that material in the floodplain, in the city floodplain.
Yeah, right, because, yeah, under the theory of displacement.
Yeah, I think we understand where you're coming from now, so that one would be slightly changed to reflect what Dale was saying.
Okay.
As far as I know, the developer was okay with this, and the construction that they were talking about would not, the fill is not going to be supportive anyway. They're going to either have to augur it or do some kind of support that's different than your standard. What is it?
Caissons.
That's a good point. So it's basically going to just cover up the foundation, which will be.
The stilts.
The pilings or whatever that's going to, the footers or whatever is going to be poured. Yeah, that's a good point.
But you have to understand, when I ask the question, I'm not familiar with all those.
Understand, yeah.
We just listened to them last couple of weeks.
Number 12, "A storm water management plan will be developed for the construction prior to as well as post-development." In my interpretation, that was saying, you know, there will be compliance with the land development ordinance, which is already applicable. Therefore, since it's already, you know, referencing again, other ordinance that we have in the city, applicability, it's kind of again, in the kind of the notice kind of category, and I said okay to it. And I think I rewrote it basically to that effect in the language for you. So that was a majority passage on that one. Proposed condition number 13, "Any entrance constructed from Morris Avenue shall be gated for emergency use only, not accessible for deliveries." Yeah, I found that to be, in concept, to be fine and a majority vote. We did rewrite that one to be a little more specific and say, "Construct a secondary emergency means of ingress adjacent to Morris Avenue, reviewed and approved by the Athens City Fire Chief that precludes use by other than emergency service personnel." Again, I think it has to be approved by the fire chief.
It's about the previous one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just was reading through that, since you did add a little bit to the language on number 12. And what do you mean when you add, "Unless specifically exempted by the planning commission"?
I believe, yeah, I was going to say, I believe the planning commission, I'll let Steve address that because he and I had a conversation, but he's.
The land development ordinance has a storm water detention requirement for development sites five acres or greater. There is the allowance, though, by the planning commission to grant variances from that detention requirement, and it has not ever been used. No one has, you know, even though Walmart, Lowe's, and all those projects were right by the river, they did not ask to be exempted from that detention requirement. What I wanted to point out, though, was that the planning commission is the one that has sole jurisdiction over some waiver of that detention requirement, although I know that the developer said that they would meet that detention requirement. I don't think it'll be too great, the pre and post-development runoff rates are not going to be so large that a huge pond is going to have to be built because the development area of that five acres or greater site is minimal compared to the entire site.
One other follow-up question on that. I believe when we updated the subdivision regs, that we brought that into compliance with ORC, which now says one acre, a site that's one acre or greater. So do we need to go back?
The state requirements for one acre or greater development sites was reduced from five. It does not have a detention, the state doesn't have a detention requirement. What they have is a sediment erosion control plan and a storm water management plan that has to do with the site as it's being developed. The state has no detention requirement. They're just concerned, are you eventually going to re-vegetate and restabilize the area so you don't have any pollution of state waters? That's what they're most concerned about.
Still speaking about 12, under what circumstance, since the planning commission has already accepted whatever they sent forward, that they would exempt this from a storm, from the land development ordinance requirements? I mean, would they go back through or what? I mean, it's sort of unusual.
Well, because right now, Nancy, with the code, you don't retain 100-year flood. You retain, what is it, 25-year?
Well, what you have to do is you have to calculate a series of critical storms.
No, no, my only question is, if you guys passed it without a drainage plan, then would they come back and would you go over it with them? That's really what I was asking. Or would you grant the exemption just on the basis of what the developer said?
We've never granted an exemption to it.
To what?
So it's required that they have one.
So then there's no reason to have that sentence in there unless specifically exempted by the city planning commission?
The reason I put that in there, to be very honest with you too, was as we're going through this, we're identifying responsibility. For example, I recommended some language that said, "Unless granted a revocable license or reviewed by council." And I know you're not necessarily going to grant a revocable license for some use of city properties, but I just wanted to clarify how the process would proceed if it did go that direction.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it, you know, it's my understanding that provision here for the planning commission is in the land development ordinance.
That's correct.
Again, it's stating, since you're referencing, it's just stating it clearly, stating it doesn't say it's going to happen.
Right.
So it's not a variance, even though it's required for variance, it hasn't been voted on as a variance for, from the planning commission, the way I understand it. They still required a drainage plan. Is that the case?
Yeah.
I can't speak to that one.
Well, and given the fact that it wasn't asked for an exemption at the planning commission level, they will have to comply with the land development ordinance, which says you must retain your, you must detain storm water unless granted a variance from that.
But isn't that to have to be done before the approval of the plan?
Process-wise, I would think that that would come into play when you applied for the land development permit. So if you don't want the planning commission to have the ability then to possibly grant a variance, which I think the mayor's indicated they're not going to do, but just strike that part of it.
Let's just.
Strike that part out of it.
We can, you know, satisfactory if it just says comply with the.
Yeah, the land development ordinance might have that.
Yeah.
So everything after detention goes away.
Well, yeah, or you can just, everything after development can go away too. You know, it's not a biggie with me because it all, it's under the land development.
How about a drainage plan before approval? Is that so unusual?
Well, it's part of the problem.
What?
That's what's happening, actually.
We have a drainage plan now. We're going to approve it soon?
No, I'm sorry.
We don't have a drainage plan. We are going to approve it anyway.
We'll see.
We will vote on it.
We will vote on it?
Yes.
To approve it without a drainage plan?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're required to have one.
But we're going to approve it anyway, even though they're required to have one before the approval? No?
We're going to vote on it. We don't know whether we're going to approve it or not.
That's right.
Let's see, we were on 12, 13.
Whatever way you look at it, it's the planning commission. That's within the purview of the planning commission.
So we should send it back to the planning commission?
No.
Oh.
Paul, I just told you what.
Of course you are supposed to.
You can put the condition in as, say there, and it goes in as a majority, or you can, you know, float it down, I guess, and that's your two options.
Okay.
Proposed condition number 14, "Further soil study shall be completed prior to construction." I didn't see any big problem with it, I'm assuming there was. I'm assuming there was some concern about the soils. I'm also making the assumption there's already been some soil studies done since, we used the word additional soil studies.
No, we went to see 13.
So I made the assumption that, you know, there was some reason that you wanted these additional soil studies, and that there's already some been done on the site. We changed, Steve and I changed that one, say, conduct additional soil studies and incorporate findings into the development and design of structural footers and foundations and account for any additional structural loads related to possible public utility maintenance. That's what we thought, in our best opinion, you were talking about. Tell me if we're not.
Yes, I think we're.
Okay. Number 15, a fill plan shall be developed, including descriptions of any slopes created and planned for their protection during flood events. Again, this is covered within Titles 25 and 27 of the Athens Code, and I allow it to be put in with a majority vote, and again, just simply referencing those codes. Title 25 is the flood ordinance and 27 is the land development ordinance.
Background on that is, river place and those black tubes and how ugly they look, and if the bike path is a common public good, we don't want that sort of appearance there. Likewise, the problem behind, not Lowe's, but that mini mall between it, again with the falling out and whatever was going on there, the erosion behind it.
Right.
Serious problems with structure, right?
But they've been cited, haven't they?
I don't know.
Have there ever been citations on any of this erosion stuff? Steve, do you know?
Probably not.
I've had no complaints about it.
Actually, Nancy, the black tubes are gone.
Well, that's a plus. We don't want them at all.
I've worked with the developer after the fact. There's nothing that prohibits people from draining their storm water that way, and I know aesthetically it looks pretty terrible, but that's some kind of detail that normally is not looked at when we're looking at, you know, broad review of projects. And I have worked with them and actually helped them develop a new storm water disposal system that eliminated those pipes. In addition, I added in the language too, and I thought you were concerned about erosion, it also says, including erosion protection measures related to water velocities caused by a flood event. So I knew you were concerned about riprap, large rock, or soil stability, right in place where the floodway and those high velocities meets the floodplain. So, yes, there is additional measures that you have to somehow protect or armor those embankments in order to prohibit that erosion that could occur.
Yeah, and I think part of the discussion at that time was that, since there isn't a fill plan available for us to review, there's one place on the plan where the corner of the building is six feet away from the edge of the floodway, which would indicate, at a place that I believe there would be seven feet of fill. So, you know, it looks like it would be a pretty significant slope or else a retaining wall, and people were really concerned about, you know, what kind of impact that would have on the bike path.
That's very close to the bike path, and that's the tenor of this comment.
Okay. Number 16, the developments, parking areas we made available to public utilization, nearby recreation areas. Lotable in concept, legally questionable in my mind, because it's kind of in the nature of extracting a fee for your approval of the process. If there had been, quote, a development agreement in, at the beginning of the whole thing, and that was part of it, I probably would say, okay. There not being, and we're at the stage now where you're trying to bring it on as a condition for approval, which is clearly what it falls into the category of by this ordinance, I think it makes it somewhat questionable legally whether we can do that, so I'm recommending you delete that one. Proposed condition number 17, there will be no negative impact to the current bike path. I don't know what it meant, to be honest with you. I mean, I kind of know what no negative, but I don't really know what you mean in to quantify it. And again, I didn't think that was really what the planning commission was considering. I think you can probably do that, but I thought it needed to be done by three force vote. I believe, Steve and I took a stab at, and this probably could even be written better, but we tried to put a little more definition to it, and we're saying, there shall be no activity related to site development that could cause adverse impact to the existing bike path. You tell me if that captures the essence of what you're trying to say and do.
No.
Condition number 18, the drainage ditch shall be fenced or otherwise secured to protect persons in the area. Again, I didn't really know what this one meant, but I do think it's something, if you're concerned about, you could address, and I don't think the planning commission normally would consider this, so I put a three force vote to adopt it. Again, Steve and I took a stab at making it a little bit more specific, and you tell me if it fits what you're really trying to do. Submit an approvable excavation and/or fill plan that conforms to the requirements of Title 25, the flood prevention, and 27, the land development, and specifically include.
No, we're on the next one.
I'm sorry, I'm on the right one, I can't read them yet. Where am I?
Right here.
19? Okay. There shall be constructed and maintained, yeah, okay.
There is ours right here.
Yeah, there shall be constructed and maintained barriers or fences approved by the Athens City Service Safety Director along existing drainage ways and ditches that could be considered an attractive nuisance. We made the assumption that your concern really was that kids or other people, and children or others would.
People from the second floor.
Yeah, from next door would find their way over and sort of like the swimming pool kind of concept, attractive nuisance kind of thing, and that's why you wanted the fencing.
Wasn't mine, then, so I think what was going on.
Exactly?
Or some other.
For the second floor, the people who are in the Alzheimer's ward.
Yeah.
Okay, or the extremely elderly.
Yes.
We just weren't sure where the fence was to be located, because it just talked about drainage ways. I didn't know if that included the river, or that was the ditch that came out from along where the library was at.
A ditch.
The ditch, which fills up with water several times a year.
And sewage occasionally, yes.
Okay, we're up to 19. Some additional statement regarding nursing beds shall be published that addresses the safety concerns regarding these beds. Again, I understand where you're coming from, I think it's lotable, but State of Ohio controls nursing bed construction and pretty much blocks us out locally. And that, I thought that these were kind of, what your major concerns were probably covered under 10 and 13, which is the emergency evacuation plan and the emergency ingress and egress issues. So I'm recommending you delete it, since it's really, I don't think it's necessarily in your purview, and since it's, in my opinion, your concerns are probably taken care of by 10 and 13. Number 20, national church residences will, shall strive to include a recreation/park area near the eastern edge of their site. This may involve eliminating the cottages proposed for the site, and some plan to integrate them with recreational use. Again, a lotable purpose, I don't think you can do it. I mean, I think you could do it, but it could open up the whole argument that this is not a pod under our current, and I, at this point, I, looking at your definition of planning and development ought to be revisited and revised, quite frankly, but in dealing with the definition you have, it either needs to be, you know, two separate structures or multiple uses to be a pod, and, you know, it's already been determined to be, the rest of it's all one big building kind of concept, so. And again, it's another one of those, it kind of smacks of saying, we'll give you approval if you dedicate some more to, to the citizens and. It opens the door to a lot of potential challenges, unless they're just willing to do it. If they're just willing to do it, it doesn't need to be any ordinance, because they'll do it anyway. I'm recommending deleting.
Just in regards to that, I have spoken to more than one representative of the developers, and they've all said that they are willing to work on some compromise that would lead to a development of a park/recreational area adjacent to nearby the cottages, something like that. So that would be something we work on cooperatively, whether it's in this agreement or not. Any other, did you have something else to say, Mr. Hunter?
I doubt, that's my comments on the 20 conditions and my recommendations to you. Based on Dale's comments, well, 6 needs to be, obviously should say Stimson Avenue. And based on Dale's comments, I would rework 11, I think it is, for you. Yeah, 11.
Any other quick comments? Carol, you haven't said one.
I don't see anywhere in here that it addresses the Morris right-of-way.
Right, that's a separate ordinance, which we don't have.
Which comes first, the chicken or the egg here? You know, how do we perceive that? Do we have to handle that question first before we consider this possible ordinance?
You were talking about the, what, the Morris Avenue revocable license?
Or however we want to handle that. We haven't really had a thorough discussion of the possibilities of what.
We know what the extent is, it's about an acre.
Right.
The recommendation from the planning commission said that if we don't vacate the Morris Avenue right-of-way, that they would require a rear setback variance and the revocable license for parking in the right-of-way. So that whole question, I think, is still open of how do we handle all of that?
It might revolve around the recreation area as well.
I would suggest that you, you know, bring them both up, you decide, you bring the ordinances up simultaneously.
But isn't there a problem if they haven't really drawn their plans? And they don't have a plat, so we don't know how much encroachment there'll be?
On the right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
I've seen it.
Yeah, there's a set of plans that show a building fairly close to the Morris Avenue right-of-way in Phase 1, a Phase 2 addition that would be constructed on Morris Avenue, and also the plan indicates parking on the Morris Avenue right-of-way. So I believe you do have a site plan that shows Phase 1, Phase 2, and all the parking proposed in that area.
Well, as we've listened to the developers, I think that that was just a schema that suggested what we might do. I don't think they.
Well, that's what was presented to the planning commission, and what the planning commission approved and forwarded to you. So the planning commission, after that point, didn't have an opportunity to look at plans that you had asked to be revised.
That's Leonard Sawyer's basic elevation plan with some buildings dropped on it. Yeah.
So our approval is both a Phase 1 and Phase 2, including a building in the middle of the right-of-way, whether we give it to them or not? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh-uh.
It's not for both phases?
No, I mean, I don't think you can say it like that.
It's not approval of a building dropped in the middle of the right-of-way, that's, I've already said, that has to be done by a separate ordinance.
And that's our bargaining chip, isn't it?
This is probably not the appropriate place to ask my question.
Well, I mean, I just think you might as well say it out loud in public, because that's what it is.
But it, yes, the plans that we have do show a building built on it, whether it's Phase 1 or Phase 2, it's all, it's still there, and I, as I understand it, we're approving a plan which includes Phase 1 and Phase 2. We're being asked to approve a plan, so we need to consider that when we talk about approving the revocable license for Morris Avenue, and some language about a term of the license.
Well, I think when you talk about the, you know, you have, the options you have are to vacate the, that portion of Morris Avenue, or the other one I said you could consider would be the revocable license. But if you do the revocable license, you need to have an indication whether that is satisfactory to the developers. Revocable license by very nature is revocable. Now, whether or not, you know, if you allow somebody to build on it, a revocable license, you could go out there and, the next whim, and terminate it or not, I don't know, it's probably an interesting legal question. But by very definition, a revocable license is revocable. Your current rules say revocable licenses are good for 10 years. Of course, that's just your internal policy that council has adopted, you can set any, you know, timeline what you want on that. I doubt very seriously that a 10-year revocable license would be something the developer could get financing to build a project on.
Actually, what were you going to say? You're going to say.
Well, council's used a different mechanism to approve encroachments on public lands before, and you did this recently up on, right off Coventry, where a garage was found to be constructed on the right-of-way of a small cul-de-sac. And you didn't do that with a revocable license, you just did that with an ordinance that approved an encroachment into a public way so long as the structure existed. That's my recollection of how you handled that garage.
Yeah, we like to plan in advance this.
The other, what I was going to say is, actually, I have in this somewhere, our actual definition of revocable license is for 10 years or term to be determined, a term to be determined by council. So we do have the power to set a term which might coincide with the lease agreement for this land or something like that, so I guess, detail's still to be worked out with regards to that. Or.
Yeah, and I'm going to see some of these.
Would it be legal to attach it to the current leaser? In other words, if they left, then.
Yeah, I mean, is that legal?
That's how we do revocable. That's all up to you to do that now. You do that routinely, yearly.
Yeah, you can make those, you know, you can put those kind of requirements on it. The question is, the real question is, is that satisfactory to the financing agency that's providing the financing?
To me, I guess, to me, I would rather do a permanent easement than a revocable license, because we've only done a revocable license for a structure when we had the situation where the structure was built unbeknownst to anyone.
Wow.
And we were sort of left with that remedy, and we haven't typically done revocable licenses for structures, like a building. We have done them for parking, I think.
We've actually done, we've done revocable licenses for zoning encroachments where people's garages or so encroach over.
That was what I said, but it was, it wasn't before they built them, though, I don't think.
No, I mean, this is different, I have some reservations about a permanent easement.
Do you?
Whether or not you can even grant a permanent easement on a public right-of-way.
So Gary.
That's one reason why years ago, I suggested do the revocable license.
So Gary, here's the nature of the problem, though.
Because we could always get it back for a road if we needed it. Either you vacated it.
No, but what our problem was, that we've heard from many people that it could easily change into dormitories. And I think the people on the east end have been threatened by this, and they feel rather concerned. And I think that the nature of this motion is simply to say, if it changes hands and goes away from what seems to be a pretty reasonable parking variance to something that doesn't need a parking variance, whatever council is here, or whatever administration is here, should have a right to leverage more parking places. That's simply what we were trying to do with the easement. I mean, I think that getting right down to the bottom line, it's all those threats we've heard, that, and then the people on the west.
Then you're probably better off with a revocable license, I suspect, then.
And I'm not sure it's real, but I think that most of the people have listened, and they're very concerned about this potential transformation.
You have the most flexibility with a revocable license.
But it seems to me like the question of financing is a reasonable one. I mean, if you're asking for financing for a project.
Then they'll discuss that and say that we can't live with that, and then we'll say, well, we can't live with something else, so that's what negotiations become. At this point, I'm going to suggest that you'll bring, the law director spent a lot of time discussing things, people seem to understand his reasoning, and I suggest we bring it up for first reading next week, and I'll also ask the clerk and the law director to come up with the language regarding revocable license for Morris Avenue right-of-way as a separate ordinance.
I would be opposed to that until we have some systematic way to have a trade-off as the people have requested, or at least some acknowledgement that that's a possibility, because otherwise, we're giving away an acre of public land for nothing. Because otherwise, we're giving away an acre of public land for nothing. We could make the recreation go right down the public right of way there if we wanted to. I mean, that would be a possibility. I'm only one person, but I do think that that second law, we should table it until we get what we want, or at least not put it up.
So that both ordinances go through together?
Oh, yeah.
They don't have to go through together, though. Well...
Well, but this, the one we're discussing tonight, needs to go first.
Yeah, that has to go first.
If it doesn't pass, then you don't need the second one. So you gotta do this one first. The next one can trail at a distance if it needs to.
Then let me ask our parliamentarian if, because the Planning Commission recommendation included the vacation of the right of way or the setback variance and the revocable license, if we take this one through without the other ordinance, do we need three-fourths majority to approve it at all? Because it's not the whole Planning Commission recommendation, it's just a piece of it.
If the Planning Commission recommendation recommends the vacation of the street, you're probably gonna have to take them two together.
Or they said they grant a variance. So they had two eventualities, and they didn't say one over the other, I don't think.
They gave us two choices.
Two choices.
Okay, I'd have to review the, I don't have in front of me what the Planning Commission's...
So we need that language, do we? Yeah.
If the Planning Commission's recommendation was that, you know, that there'd be vacation, then you're modifying it.
Give this to them, yes?
Yeah, maybe we need to extend this, but not tonight. We obviously have other things happening.
So we'll have only the first part, right?
Well, I have one other question, and since John Burns is here, I think it's a good time to ask it, which is, has a lease been executed?
No, the lease has been discussed and negotiated to sense of the typical blow play part of it, but we've been waiting for the determination that the city council approves it to be a deal.
Okay, so the lease has not been executed, has the resolution...
Excuse me, if we're gonna have a discussion, who needs to come up to the microphone?
Sorry.
Well, let me talk a second there. The recommendation, they are recommending you vacate, you consider vacating Morris Avenue, but then they, four and five, say that if you don't, that two other things apply. So given that, I think they're just saying if you don't do it, then these other things apply, so I don't think they have to track it.
And the two things are the variances for the parking and the setbacks, right?
I think, I'll put my glasses back on. There are the notice that without vacation of Morris Avenue, variance from 21.3 Table A bulk controls, which is the setback. A notice that without vacation of Morris Avenue, revocable license will be necessary to permit private parking.
So we have to include a revocable license for the use of the right of way and the, and variances for one scenario, or are the vacation of Morris Avenue in the other scenario? One, it's either or, no? Okay. The question that Debbie was asking, do we need three-quarters majority to pass one or the other with a vacation of Morris Avenue?
And the answer, in my opinion, is no.
Okay. So they don't...
Certain things just happen if you pass it and you don't do the vacation according to the Planning Commission's recommendation.
And if we don't give our use of right of way in this ordinance, what happens?
If you don't give use of the right of way in the ordinance, then, you know, ultimately, you're refusing the project. I mean, you could pass the...
We're negotiating, Gary.
You could approve it, but if you don't go back and approve the use of the right of way, then it's not the same project that came through.
We're in negotiations.
I understand, but his question is, what happens if you don't?
Now, my question is, we have two recommendations. One is to give it to them with a vacation of Morris Avenue. The other one is to give it to them with a variance for the parking setback, the setbacks and use of the right of way. Is that what I'm...
A revocable license.
Well, you know, I'd have to go back and talk with the Planning Commission. You're merging four and five into one, and I don't know if that's necessarily what they intended. They may have said, if you don't grant the variance and you don't grant the revocable license, then four is what applies, which is, you're not exempt from the bulk controls. I'd have to ask the Planning Commission. But Debbie's question is, what happens? You don't have to pass, in my opinion, the ordinance by three-fourths if you don't do the vacation.
If we don't do any of the recommendations, do we have to pass it with three-quarters?
If you don't do any of your recommendations?
Any of those recommendations.
If you modify them, most of them, you're just approving them. They've asked you to do something affirmative in one, four, and five. Well, one, they've asked you something affirmative, five, something affirmative, four is just a notice of what happens if you don't do it.
Okay.
So the revocable license and the variance just happen automatically?
Nope.
Okay, I didn't think so. Separate ordinance, one or the other?
Which doesn't have to proceed at the same time.
Nothing does not happen automatically, no.
Okay, good.
Please, Mr. Burns.
Your question to myself is, John Burns, I'm the Director of Legal Affairs at Ohio University, and I was asked the question, my address is 70 Browardwood Drive, Athens. I was asked the question, about the status of the lease negotiations discussion. The format of the state lease has been discussed with NCR's council. We've exchanged some different kind of language, but it has not been executed yet. That process involves agreeing to finally any other language that may be related to the conditions of the approval. Then it goes also through the Department of Administrative Services. It has been submitted in generality to them for their comments, and they made some suggestions regarding some new format changes of the lease. So the timetable here, it's about a three-a-month process, once agreed to go through the approval, the governor's signature, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the status of that. We're still kind of waiting, although we got the format down, and I think most of the people knew the issue here was the value was a dollar, and we've been looking at how that might, you know, sort out and talking to the, making sure that that translates a bit to, you know, reasonable value for the potential residents, although that's not been pinned down yet. Okay, any other questions?
I guess a follow-up, is that the trustees approved a resolution authorizing the lease, which was valid for a year, which expired in June?
Right.
And so I guess my question for the law director is how we stand in terms of their NCR's legal control of the land, if there isn't a lease and there isn't a valid resolution authorizing it?
Well, that's not really a question for me, that's a question for Mr. Burns.
The nature, it was for a lease, now the lease negotiation started, obviously the lease wasn't signed. The statutory provision is that once you sign a lease, that you have to start construction within a year. That was part of the reference in that. That will probably be, and that's been raised with the members of the CCRC and with NCR, where we are, and the timetables about this, and whether it needs to go back to the Ohio University Board of Trustees again is a question we'll have to look at. Because it was indicated, you're right, in June of 2004, we looked at a period of time of a lease of ongoing. Now, the answer to that is, I don't have a definitive thing, because we've not talked to the Board of Trustees about their view about that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
It, you know, it certainly should be resolved before you take the vote, probably, on the order.
I'm not, well, that's, let's, we have, can I answer that from a secondary question? The Board of Trustees' meetings would be probably next February or April, to do something to that effect of like that. Certainly before the project could move forward, you know, we'd want to make sure that all the lease language that is being discussed now is, you know, finalized, which we're happy to share with you on an ongoing basis as it goes along, and the mayor and everybody else, whether or not the project is approved. I'm assuming if it is approved, then we'll get down to the final details of the lease and try to make sure that it meets the legal requirements of the state. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion we need to have right now regarding this one? We do have another group of people waiting to talk to us here.
Not right now. What are we gonna do?
We take a five-minute break? Two minutes?
A two-minute break. What are we gonna do? We're gonna, I'm going to...
Think about it.
I'm gonna bring the law director's proposal up on Monday. We will work on a secondary ordinance dealing with the right of way.
Later on.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Two minutes.
Do you want to talk to that?
Really tight.
Really, two minutes.
You knew what?
Really, two minutes.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Swartz, I'll pass them out. A second part to the Planning and Development Committee meeting, which is gonna happen just a half hour after we begin the retirement center discussion, that was the plan, that kind of went by the wayside. And I do appreciate everybody's patience and waiting through this. But now we're gonna introduce a representative task force that was appointed by the mayor to investigate the possibility of the city taking over Stroud Run State Park.
Great. Well, I think, well, I know my name is David Reacher, and I guess I first want to say that I have to apologize to significant presenters who were not able to make it tonight, and those are John Petowski, who subcommittee was involved with developing the partnership with ODNR, and also Dave Vogt couldn't be here tonight, and he was responsible for the company, he dealt with financial concerns. So we were gonna sort of labor without that, but we'll cover it. Also, maybe hold your questions until we're done, we'll try to move through this as quickly as possible. I think the task force would also like in advance to thank Wayne Keys and Kevin for facilitating all this work, for providing us plates to meet and a lot of lunches. I guess that, you know, of course, I'll start out with a couple of questions. Why is the Ohio Department of Natural Resources looking for a partner to assume ownership and management of Stroud Run State Park? And why should Athens be considered such a venture? Stroud Run State Park includes over 2,600 acres, including 160 acre 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 acre. It includes 23 miles of roads, 24 miles of trails, and my realtor friends indicate that the market value would be somewhere in excess of $10 million. Now, I, the, since its inception, Stroud Run State Park has been relatively easy for ODNR. The problems have been very few, and enforcement has been largely uneventful, and it's therefore, I think, understandable that as budgets get crunched at the state level, the least we can wheel gets the least amount of oil. And as a result, the budget for operating Stroud Run State Park over the past five or six years has gone from $300,000 per year to the current operating budget, which is about $135,000 per year. And I think as the focus of the state parks has changed to more of a resort and entertainment orientation, the original vision of this park has been significantly lost. And this is something which I think we can help reestablish. Now, since my, you know, I came to Athens about 35 years ago, and since I've come here, I've been very concerned about our community's lack of vision. There is no vision of the community. There's always been polarization. We're famous for polarization. There are Bohemians, and there are the bourgeois. You know, there's the city, there's the university. There are tree huggers, and there are strip miners. There are isolationists, and there are people who want to build highways everywhere. Now, I think things possibly can change. I think maybe some of these things, some of these people can come together, and I think that Stroud Run State Park becoming a part of the city can be a metaphor for that change. This park will have a vision. Now, initially, the ODNR released a press release which indicated their interest in partnering with the city to assume the operation of the park. And the mayor constituted a task force, and we're all listed on the front of this little book here. And the task force, we have met every week for about nine months now. We have spent over 2,000 man-hours of our own time, man and woman hours, excuse me, and that doesn't even count the countless hours of additional consultants who have helped us on a voluntary basis to collect huge amounts of data. I think also, I've got to say, this task force is remarkably diverse. Of the people on the task force, there are three people who are in the employ of the city, there are three OU employees, there's four business persons, there are representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, from the Athens Conservancy, from the Convention Visitors Bureau, from Athens County, and from ODNR, all on our task force. There's a list of everybody, and you've got a copy of that. "In fulfilling its original design purpose of combining education and recreation, Stroud Run Park and Dow Lake facilitates the long-term study of natural resource-related sciences and outdoor recreation, environment conducive to family-oriented, low-impact recreational pursuits." This is our mission. Our vision... Who's gonna have somebody else? You're gonna read our vision.
If I can read from here. "Our vision is a healthy lake surrounded by unparalleled beauty from the flourishing natural landscape of old and new growth forest. Stroud Run State Park provides a setting which enhances the educational and recreational growth of the citizens of southeast Ohio and beyond. The associated..." The Associated Nature Center and recreational venues facilitate the transfer of knowledge and provide a venue for the development of an appreciation for the importance of discovery and the healthy use of nature."
Thank you. Well, we know that Stroud Run State Park has a remarkably colorful history. It lies along what is called the Marietta-Chillicothe Trace, which is well-known to the mound builders of the Hopewell culture. It was well-known to Tecumseh, it was well-known to the early Europeans, it contains archaeological sites as well as natural wonders. At one point, Stroud Run State Park was owned by the naval hero John Paul Jones. He probably never came here, but he was given this land as compensation for his service in the Revolutionary War. When the Ohio Company, which we're all familiar with, offered to purchase our region, it offered in two stages, and it failed to come up with enough money for the second payment. And what they did instead was to include military bounties to cover the shortfall of money to buy this property. And what they did is they took these military bounties and used them as leverage to be able, and one such bounty was to John Paul Jones. And as a captain, he would have gotten 300 acres, and we really don't know as an admiral how much, you know, what the actual acreage he received was. Baron de Steiger purchased the area from Jones's heirs, and he, you know, and he came here together with a group of Swiss farmers. And the Swiss farmers included people like Finsterwalds, Stalders, Gillets, and Weisses, names that are still very familiar in our area. The earliest Strouts, actually, were William and Asa Stroud, Asa was a minister. I really don't know why they, their name came to be associated with this, but that's the source of the name. And it's also, a famous spring supplies the water from the lake, called a Linska Spring, which, according to the newspapers, in 1900 produced 200,000 gallons of water a day. We know these early farmers remained in the valley, at least there were four small cemeteries. When the lake was built, one of the cemeteries required being moved to Cannonville. I think history is a great common denominator, and the more we know about the ground that we walk on, the more we love that ground. The thoughts of lakes and parks started in the '20s. 131 acres was owned by J.J. Crumley. In 1926, he wrote a reference work, Constructive Forestry for the Private Owner. He was a forester, he worked for the state of Ohio, he was in charge of buying land for Hocking Hills area in Zaleski State Forest. He was born in Tennessee and died here. He died at the age of 88 when he was hit by a driver on East State Street. On the evening of New Year's Day in 1952, he was hit so hard that he was thrown 50 feet and his galoshes were knocked off. And as usual, he had been rambling around his property, and part of that land is now the park, and part of it is actually where Lowe's stands today. After his death, his heirs sold 131 acres to the state as part of the Athens State Forest, which was the predecessor of the state park. Clarence Dow then appears on the scene. He was an eminent geologist and geographer, he was chairman of OU's department, he was a key figure, actually, in the creation of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And he was the principal force behind the state park. He secured a half a billion dollars to build a dam, and he died unfortunately just prior to the construction of the dam. His friend and colleague, George Billy, still talks about closing the valve on the overflow, May 22, 1959. Christine is now going to say a little bit about the natural history and the importance of a management plan.
I think one of the things that the task force really came to agree on, even the beginning of the task force, was the importance of sustaining the natural resources and the natural integrity of Stroud Run. I think Clarence Dow would be quite impressed with Dow's Run and Stroud's Run as it stands now, because it's gone from a really degraded area of overfarmed pasture land to an area that has an amazing diversity of wildlife and plant diversity. There's amazing diversity of some old growth forests, new areas that have been planted in plantations when the ODNR had taken over. As our vision statement indicates, the foremost thought in our mind when developing the suggestions and the recommendations to go ahead with this acquisition was to ensure that Stroud Run remains viable and productive and an area of protection for the biodiversity that's there for generations to come. And I think that the city of Athens is the best entity to do that. Presently, even though the state has had Stroud Run for however many years, there is no management plan written for Stroud Run. We do not know at present where the trouble areas are, what sort of management activities should be taking place to ensure that the continued biodiversity is protected, that exotic species are taken care of. So that, in order to ensure that the protection of the resources, Athens has the ability to go forward with that protection. We're here, and we have the expertise. One problem that Stroud Run has is invasive species, which is not only Stroud Run, but all over southeast Ohio. Garlic mustard, our friend, the geese, which affect water quality and such. As it stands now, there's no management plan to address, or even know, the extent of these problems. There have been research that looks at many of these sort of problems, but no management plan has come out of it. The task force identified that Stroud Run needs a management plan, and that's one of the first priorities. Stroud Run management plan would be written under the auspices of a task force or an advisory group that would be put together as a permanent advisory board for Stroud Run. That means that all the management decisions, management planning, would be done at a local level. And I think that this would ensure the long-term sustainability for the natural resources that is found in Stroud Run. I suggest for the management plan that the four basic things that would be need to be done would be a natural resource inventory, a needs analysis, development of goals and objectives, and a prioritization of management activities and budget activities that would be required to ensure the long-term sustainability for the natural resources. That may include such things as identifying areas that we want to remove structures from, because we may not need, you know, however many campground facilities that are there to ensure that natural resources are protected. It may include such things as trying to decide how to make all quality standards are met in the near future by managing geese populations. All these sort of things can be done at present by people who are in Athens. We have a lot of different resources at our disposal, and by having an advisory board that's local, we have local management and local control, will ensure that the priorities of Stroud Run will remain a top priority for ourselves.
Great, thank you. Well, I think that if the city undertakes this great venture, I think it's important that it depend on very strong partnerships. And first, I think I have to express the great debt that we owe to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, because it's been through their stewardship of this 2,600 acres of overgrazed, abused land that 45 years later, we have a beautiful park and 161 acre lake. And I think that our first partnership that we would like to discuss is that partnership with the Department of Natural Resources. This was to be John Katuski's little piece, and Kevin has volunteered to sit in for him and take care of this right now. Kevin?
Yeah, on our subcommittee was John Katuski, and Bob Aikenberg, and myself. And what we looked at was really if the city decided to take over Stroud Run, what would we want the state to provide to us in that transfer? And one of the first things we talked about was actually a financial commitment from ODNR. What we've kind of come to an agreement on is, in the first year of operations, they would provide us with $49,500 to use in operating the park. That came through negotiations with Dan West, who is the state director of parks for ODNR. A few other items that we were concerned about, which I'm sure council has thought of also, are the lake and the dam themselves. What we wanted to make sure was if we assume responsibility, that the lake would remain on the dredging schedule, which exists for all state parks, and that we would continue on that schedule. What they're feeling is, is as an entity, the city probably may even move up that list. There is actually a list that they have developed. Stroud Run is fairly far down on that list at this point. But as a city asking for to have the lake dredge, if we feel that's something needed in the future, we actually would probably move up on that list and could acquire that sooner than what the state itself could. The other problem, one of the other problems we thought was the quality of the lake, to make sure if we would assume the responsibility that the lake was turned over in good shape, any past studies that they had done concerning the lake and the quality of the water, we would be aware of those, and that we would assume that they would continue with that partnership through the entire ownership by the city, that they would still provide us with that expertise which they have in place. And some of these things, it's not really the park system, it may be Department of Wildlife, it may be other ODNR departments that we would count upon, but they would provide that assistance to us in the future. Part of the main item that we're concerned about was the dam itself, you know, what would happen in year two if there was major problems with the dam, you know, we know the city couldn't afford to make major improvements to the dam or major changes to the dam. They have agreed to, from their most recent dam study, to make the improvements, there's some landslips up there, they're going to fix those prior to any transfer. But also, they would remain, the liability of dam would remain with the state of Ohio until the point they bring it up to current standards, which at this point, there's really no date for that, and they really don't assume that's going to happen in the near future. So really, the liability of dam would remain with the state of Ohio, probably throughout this transfer of property. Unless at some point in the future, they would get it up to current standards, which they don't feel that ever would probably be the case. I think when they look at their dams across the state of Ohio, Stroud Run's is considered one of their better dams, though. It's way down their list of dams that may need repairs in the future. We've also asked that they provide us with any studies and investigations, which they really have done during this task force. A lot of the things were given to Doug and his committee, so most of those things we already have in place. That they would transfer any pertinent supplies or materials, such as maybe work task orders, rental agreements, campground agreements, things like that, that they would give us all that material and those supplies that they use. Also, that all structures will be given to us in good condition, including utilities. And most of the structures out there, there's a house, there's a storage area, there's some shelter houses, there is no sewage at the park, it's all pumped-out sewage-type facilities, and the water is Baroque water. We've also asked that they transfer any equipment that they use there that they would not take with them, and they've agreed to transfer some mowers, front-end loader, rakes that they use to rake the beach. So equipment that they would leave for us at no cost to the city, we would continue ownership of that equipment. Those are pretty much all the things we talked about. We recommended the task force. We have met with Dan West numerous times to talk about those items, and most of those, he's in agreement to do those if this transfer would take place.
Okay, now Kevin is going to continue talking, because he's going to talk a little bit about the role of the city and how the existing city infrastructure might mesh with the operation of the park.
Yeah, what we have talked about is under our current, even though we have around 350 acres of parkland, and this is, you know, additional 2,600 acres, many of the things that are involved with Stroud Run are things that we do, we just do them on a much smaller scale. We have Sales Park, we have a trail supervisor who does trail work for us currently, we have a lot of trails in that park. We have a lot of staff that can help with how the park would be run, including, you know, information referral. Even now, when you call Stroud Run Park, you call Baroque, you don't call Stroud Run anymore, people would call the park office, we could give information, we could do rentals from there. We would continue with camping being self-registration. We do have a rec wear program that allows us to do registration of facilities and facility maintenance and all those things. Soon to be, we may be able to do that over the internet. We're changing our software package at the first of the year. So at that point, people may be able to do reservations from their house, go on, register for a campground, those sorts of things. We would continue to do the payroll, the hiring, all those things that we do, it just would be for a new facility. Mowing, trail work, the beach work, repair and maintenance, cleaning, trash collections, concessions and contracts, supervision, staffing, those are things we currently do within our own department, so we just would continue those on at Stroud Run State Park. Stroud Run is not within the city, we may have to develop some kind of mutual aid agreements between the police department and the county. The county's actually does the policing out there currently, along with the ODNR park police, and also with the fire department, some kind of mutual aid agreement if there would be a problem out there. Some of the expertise we could bring to us that even ODNR does not have is we could do our own water testing with the water lab, structure maintenance with lands and buildings. I've had the street department go out and look at the streets out there in the parking lots, some of those services we could provide ourself. Signage, marketing promotion, which we would do through our own department, and the budget and planning are things we do currently. Realizing if we have the lab do testing, and if we have the street department do work for us, there is a cost to the city, and we actually have figured out in our budget what those costs are. If it'd be a transferable thing to those budgets or how that would work, I'm not sure. But it is, when you see our budget later, those costs are actually part of that overall budget, knowing that the water, say, the laboratory shouldn't be testing for free, there'll be some cost to us to have them do that. Would be less, though, than having a contractor do it. And most of these things, even though there would be a cost to the city, and possibly be a transfer from fund to fund, it'd still be less than having a contractor come in and do that work. The final thing is a lot of the equipment that we would need, with ODNR leaving behind some equipment, but most of the equipment we have in place could also be used out at Stroud Run. We have trailers to take our equipment around, we have mowers, tractors, implements for our tractors, we have dump trucks, we have loader and backhoe. So most of the equipment that would need at Stroud Run, we already have in place, and don't anticipate having to purchase any new equipment, especially with the transfer of current ODNR equipment to us. And as you'll see in later budgets, there is some cost involved with, you know, more personnel. We don't expect to take over Stroud Run with our current staffing levels. Those are pretty much all the items that I have. Turn it back over to Dave.
Great. Well, there's a lot of other partners as well. There's, you know, and they're mentioned, we've talked to almost all the other groups that are actively involved in the utilization of the park, and I won't go through all these to save some time, but these are all very highly motivated citizens who already contribute thousands of their hours to maintaining, improving facilities, and these groups all stand ready to continue to do their work in the event that there is the transfer of I think one important area to mention is enforcement. The ODNR Division of Wildlife will continue its role in hunting and fishing enforcement and regulation. The ODNR Division of Watercraft will continue enforcement of all aboding regulations, so these are nothing that we will have to assume responsibility for, these remain with ODNR. I've also spoken with the sheriff, and the sheriff assures me that there actually already is an agreement in place with the city, and that his intention is to continue with the exact same level of patrolling that currently exists at the park, regardless of whether the state owns it or the city owns it. I guess, you know, our little town is a truly unusual organism, we certainly know that every last weekend. Once a year, our town inflates to almost three times its nascent size, only to return to its smaller version nine months later. And the cause of this is Ohio University, and it's appropriate that Ohio University be a very significant partner in our future park. Until 1975, Ohio University was a more formal partner and actually contributed funds to ODNR for the utilization... funds to ODNR for the utilization of the park as a land lab. Uh, we really don't know. We never really found out exactly how much that contribution was and we really never found out exactly why the contribution ceased, but the utilization of the park by Ohio University, both by College of Arts and Sciences and Health and Human Services Recreation Division, uh, continues to this point. And so I think it's important that, that we have Doug Franklin, uh, speak about this and the work of his team of consultants and he'll also explain to us something that we came to know as Doug's paradox and how that has influenced our vision and our very conservative approach to the park. Doug?
Well, I, I approached it, um, in, in a myriad of ways, but I wanted to start basically by kind of telling you that the park is used for an educational use. Uh, the first person that found out, uh, when the, when the, the state was interested in, in turning over the park was Phil Cantino and he sent a list of all the classes, uh, that are utilizing Stroud's Run. If you, if you ever do a dissertation research or a thesis, uh, research, um, you'll find that a number of people have done studies out in Stroud's Run. If you ever walk through the park on the trails, you'll see things that are hanging off trees. It's part of the, uh, uh, either plant biology or environmental sciences. Um, and that kind of spoke to me. That's, I, I kind of visioned that's what Dow wanted. Dow wanted really to reclaim land and he wanted it to use it as an educational center. And in reality, that first, uh, fifteen years was actually, it was a land lab out on, at Stroud's Run that was completely run by Ohio University. Um, we, we can kind of imagine what happened in nineteen seventy-five. That was the time when the university was struggling and it was probably trying to figure out ways to cut some of their funding, uh, uh, issues. So what they did was they just cut that piece off. And in reality, as David said, the park never went away for Ohio University's educational use. And so what you've got is arts and sciences and then you have the College of Health and Human Service that actually does, uh, recreation management, outdoor adventure, um, adventure rec. They do PED classes out there. They teach canoeing on the lake. They teach, uh, uh, Wilderness First Responder out in the, in the park. They teach a variety of different functions that are academic in nature. Um, and then of course you have my area of, uh, responsibility, which is the Division of Campus Recreation. I think it's really, uh, interesting that a number of people that have come here tonight are from the rowing club because that's their recreational pursuit. That's their park. Uh, they use it on a, on a fairly regular basis. Uh, matter of fact, uh, they'll tell you they use it every single day. If you ever just run a search, a Google search on Stroud's Run, you will come up with a number of people that have found that their recreational activity on Stroud's Run as students at Ohio University were one of the things that they cherished about their experiences here. And so we are, um, connected. Ohio University is connected. It was built, uh, under the understanding by Dow that this is part of Ohio University. And so, uh, you know, it, it's unfortunate that he didn't live to see his vision. Uh, I think he would be, uh, very, very pleased to see where it is right now, uh, particularly where we want to think, where we think we can take it, where we think that, that return to nature or the, or the natural, uh, the natural settings. As you can see on the, on the slide, there are a number of things that, that go on, uh, for Ohio University's recreation, but these are other recreational pursuits that everybody, um, everybody's out there, whether it's horseback riding or, or swimming or canoeing, camping and those kind of things. But one of the educational things that I found most interesting, uh, was when we first got this opportunity to look at, at Stroud's Run and we took it as an educational opportunity. I, I, for good or bad, I made the suggestion that perhaps what we ought to do is to study in recreation management and everybody just kind of trampled over it and they said, "Well, you're going to do it." And I said, "Well, let me go see if I can get some faculty." And they said, "No, no, no, you're going to do it anyway." And so we ended up doing it and we had two classes, uh, Robin Middlestat's, uh, research class and we had Dr. Brown's Sports Administration class. And then I had another ten volunteers. So when we talk about two thousand hours, I had easily two thousand hours of student help that really looked at this. And what we did was a qualitative study, uh, as well as a little piece of quantitative studies. And the, the key thing that we really wanted to make sure that, that people understood and, um, Wayne has told me numbers, a number of times, you know, it, it's not until we realized what we were looking at here that, that it, it kind of brought it all home. The question is, is it in the best interest of the people of the, of Athens to manage Stroud's Run State Park locally in order to maintain its current level of operation and to stop its apparent decline? Now, that's not to mean that it's, it's totally degraded. What it means is that you can't look at something the way it was and you can't look at the way it's something it could be. What you have to do, if you're going to do a research question, you have to look at it as the way it is right now. And so we looked at that. We had some sub, sub-problems and then we created, my sick mind, I fondly call this, is I float it. Every different color, every different geometric shape that you see up there is somebody that we either interviewed or a document that we, we viewed. We did thirty-five interviews. We did, uh, the local, um, group that came in that had twenty-five people that, that were there. We, uh, surveyed them three different ways and so we had massive amounts of data. Uh, we had massive amounts of data from ODNR that we put in and, and looked at it from a document review. So we didn't take this, uh, lightly. We took it very seriously and, um, we came up with a variety of things. Now, we knew that we couldn't do everything. So in any kind of study, you have, uh, the limitations and limitations, clearly our scope, our data and our time. We did this in ten weeks, which is unheard of. It's probably a doctoral dissertation in length and it was done in ten weeks. So there is a time, uh, there's a snapshot in time. Uh, and then of course there were issues with data and we had a lot of data, but we didn't have, in some cases, accurate data. Uh, we did have that open forum. We had twenty-five people come. We surveyed them three, um, three different ways and we came out with, with some of these open, these, these themes. Pretty much everybody came to the conclusion that the state was interested in releasing the property because quite frankly, they had other interests and they didn't want to put money towards this park, as much money. Um, we asked numerous times about the capacity of the city. And while some people said, "We didn't think they had capacity," uh, the city believes they have capacity and there were a significant number of people that did feel that they had the capacity to take care of this. But the number one thing that came out of everything was that people enjoyed the seclusion and natural setting of Stroud Run. That came across and that really kind of drove exactly where we were. They were not interested in, in creating these, these, uh, these, these monster parks. They were interested in low-impact recreation and, uh, they believed that local control was better than distant control. Our findings were that, uh, we believe that we could operate the park for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and that was done basically on, um, um, by the, uh, Sports Administration Finance, uh, group. We had three teams that looked at that. Dwindling state dollars will continue to force ODNR's Division of State Parks to seek measures to contain course, uh, contain costs and that's pretty, you know, that's a, that's a so what. And this is Doug's paradox. His revenue is disproportionately inverse to expense. What that means is when we first started this, there were a number of people that said, "What we ought to do is build a, um, a, um, cabins or they, we want to build a lodge or we want to put in electrical powered, uh, campsites." What we found was that similar sized parks that were operated by ODNR, the more they had, the more revenue generation they had, the more money they spent and it was disproportionate. In other words, they spent more money than they made. And so they got deeper and deeper and deeper into the hole. And so what we suggested was, "Don't do that here. Keep it natural. Keep it simple." Um, we did find that the city had some capacity, uh, for park operations and, um, we did state that, uh, there was, uh, the park had deteriorated over, over a while and it was probably due to some funding issues. Um, we went back to Dow's original mission or his original vision, which was a nature conservancy. His plan was to, to recapture, uh, destroyed lands. And if you saw that picture in nineteen thirty-nine, the farming had basically destroyed the, uh, the, the area and he wanted to recover that and he wanted to look at the long term. And it was interesting that Dow wanted to look at longitudinal study of long-term recovery. So does Phil Cantino. He wants a place to be able to study that. Uh, Ohio University has a vested interest in Stroud's Run and what we found out was hunting is essential, both for game control and for recreational pursuits. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, I guess that the next thing is where, where I'm going to try to pick up for some slack for Dave, uh, Dave Ode, who is our finance man. And the question really is how will this partnership that we've discussed deal with the fiscal realities of managing, operating and maintaining the park? A starting point has been that this venture cannot be an added burden to the city. From the beginning, we felt that this park should be funded with income from an endowment and that a timetable should be established for this. Preliminary discussions have already taken place with the Athens Foundation, with the Oblenis Foundation and with Ohio University. But until that point, we will, we have outlined an estimated budget and I will attempt to go through, through this. Uh, the definitive income, in other words, that amount of money which we were led to believe would be fairly firm included a contribution to this of fifty thousand dollars per year by the city. Uh, and I'll let you ask questions of Kevin and Wayne and the mayor when I'm done. The one-time payment of ODNR of forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And then we're, there's a, actually there's a little errata here. Uh, this indicates the existing park income of twelve thousand dollars. Your little pamphlet shows that somewhat higher because there's a, there's a, a very fine house there, which, uh, also would provide a rental income, uh, which would elevate that, that amount of money. Uh, we've asked Kevin to, and there's probably a better breakout maybe in your handout or we have additional, uh, figures from Kevin on what we believed it would cost to operate the park. It's commensurate with the amount that is currently, uh, in the budget of the state. It also is very close to the estimate that Doug's, uh, group of consultants came up with, you know, and, uh, you can look at that and ask more detailed questions later, but we feel that, uh, given our vision, uh, that, uh, this is a, a fair amount of money. Then they, then we have the anticipated income. And this is, uh, a little bit more vague, uh, but I'll explain very briefly that there are other sources of income that perhaps are open to us. Uh, one is this additional city put back and this was just because our initial discussions with Kevin and with Wayne and the mayor indicated that the city contribution might be as high as seventy-seven thousand dollars, but then we were told maybe it wouldn't. So we've sort of broken that out. There's a significant amount of money you can see as an annual contribution from Ohio University. That's still being negotiated.